To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Crisoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
For a little minutes.
Tonight we have the minutes from the May 19, 2020, Common Council Meeting.
So moved. Massey, seconded by, all in green, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents.
Nothing to say.
For the good of the city, anyone online would like to speak?
At this time, no one would like to speak.
Okay. Remarks to the mayor?
Good evening, and, geez, I sound like Maisy. I wanted to begin tonight with recognition of what June 19 is. You know, we've had two protests in Middletown, both thankfully peacefully, and the third one in the town of Waukegan equally is peaceful, but I think America is starting to get the point, and we all have something to learn throughout this process, and hopefully all of us will. But one of the things that I've learned out of this whole demonstrations is that we don't know enough about each other, enough about our backgrounds. Andrew, you're pretty good at posting these types of comments, and so I think it's important that we recognize certain significant historical events, not like Donald Trump by holding a rally on June 19, but by, first of all, learning what Juneteenth is. And that's why we have the slide up here about the Tulsa Race Massacre of 1921, 99 years ago, and what communities are doing, and this was organized by Mayor Rob Ralison out of Poughkeepsie, is issuing proclamations where communities would recognize the importance and significance of Juneteenth, as it's called, and the Emancipation Proclamation, and acknowledging the wrongdoings of 1921, where about 300, at least 300 people, I think, were murdered. So Mayor Ralison submitted this to the regional mayors and asked us if we would be so kind to also join Poughkeepsie, and these are Poughkeepsie's words, and we just changed the names, but we're recognizing it. So I'd like to read it. Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal not only in freedom but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization, and whereas on New Year's Day, January 1, 1863, using his war powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held to slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall, quote, "shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free." And whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery a Union war aim and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all four million slaves as the Union armies advanced. And whereas, hearing of the proclamation, many slaves escaped to Union lines as the army units moved south. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings, some communities purchased land for the Juneteenth celebrations, such as Emancipation Park in Houston, Texas, and as freed families migrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them. And whereas L. Edwards, a freshman state representative, put forward the Bill 1979, making Texas the first state to grant this emancipation celebration, and on June 1, 1980, Juneteenth became an official Texas state holiday, and since then, 45 other states and the District of Columbia have also declared it an official holiday, and resolved that I, Joseph M. DiStefano, mayor of the City of Middletown, do hereby designate that June 19, 2020, as Juneteenth. And witness thereof, I set my hand upon and cause the seal of the City of Middletown, signed here today, and will be presented on June 19 to local leaders of the demonstrations and the Black Lives Matter movement. So I think it's important, and we'll try to do, Jerry, you're usually the historian, and maybe frequently we can bring up events like this that affect other people too, and we're very happy to do so and recognize what's going on in the world here. So my next is an update on the COVID-19, and as of June 15, the City of Middletown has 1,134 positive cases. As you can see by the slide, we are number two. The town of Waukegan is number three. So between the two of us, I believe we're around 2,000 or a little bit over 2,000. And I've given the reasons before. It's not because of people here aren't doing what they're supposed to do, at least in the first phase and backwards, that our residents are mostly people who work, hardworking, blue collar working people, working in hospitals, working in supermarkets, working in government, working in many jobs. We've had quite a few city employees test positive and have recovered, but we still, as the governor keeps saying, is we need to take precautions because New York is actually, has not only studied the curve, but we are in a pretty significant decline, but we can't lose sight of the fact of what's happening in the rest of the country. So as of yesterday afternoon, we did open up the Middletown Skate Park, and the park has been open. We will continue to monitor it. I've been over there now two days in a row, and as I said prior to this, is the community was cooperating on the wearing of masks and social distancing. The skate park is not, they're not cooperating. They're tearing down the signs. They're violating the rules of the social distancing. It's mostly young people not wearing masks. I've spoken to them again today. Couple of them got very nasty, couple of them put on their mask, and I advise them that, listen, guys, this is not something that we're going to babysit, and I put that on my social media post, we're not going to be sending police here or City Hall staff to tell you to comply with the law. I sent the email to Chris Brinkerhoff and asked her to coordinate with Mark Pengel and DPW to put up better signage, more permanent signage, because some of them said, well, we didn't know we had to wear a mask, and, okay, good argument. They know they have to wear it, but they didn't know they had to wear it while skating. So we're going to put up some permanent signage, and we're going to give it a few more days. But parents, if you're listening, all the parents who called me and sent me emails about, why aren't you opening up the skate park? You are now responsible for conveying the message to your children, and it's mostly children that are using it, young people in their teens and younger, that if they're not wearing a mask and they're not social distancing on the skate park, that we will fence it in for the rest of the season. It's just as simple as that. We're not going to use police resources to go over there, have confrontations, as one kid had with me today. Maria was with me when we were taking a walk through downtown, and just unbelievable that how the fact that he thought that he could just do whatever he wants and ignore the safety of others. So I told him, you're the kind of guy that's going to ruin this for everyone else, because we're not going to put those resources into monitoring the skate park. So we'll give it a little bit more time, but if you do see a fence go up around the skate park, and it won't be the orange fence, it'll be a construction-type fence, then we'll have to live with that for the rest of the summer. But parents, please speak to your children. Please, you can play this tape of them, you can get a recording on Facebook, whatever it takes to convey the message that we are not going to be constantly going to the skate park reminding people to put on their masks. The equipment for the steam cleaner came in. That's one of the reasons why we're opening up skate park and the parks. Today, we opened up, I think, at least two, and I believe Davidge is now open also, so at least three of them are now open. Maple Hill and Academy are also open. The equipment will be steam cleaned on a daily basis. Some communities are doing nothing. They're putting up signs, you know, we're not maintaining this equipment, you're at your own risk. We felt it was important enough that, I don't agree with that, by the way, that we want to protect your kids and the kids in our community, so we're going to take whatever steps we can to make sure that, at least on a daily basis, all of this equipment will be steam cleaned. I believe this equipment gets up to 360 degrees, so it kills everything on the equipment. It's heavy-duty stuff. We purchased it under the federal COVID grant secured through Congressman Maloney's office, and we'll be using it not only on parks, but we also bought two smaller machines, and we're looking at a third. We'll be using it for the senior center, we'll be using it for Paramount Theater. The police station will be buying one also, and we'll be using that probably in the City Hall complex, doing downtown benches and park benches and park pavilions when opened up. So we're very serious about making the investment that's necessary to do what we can to keep people safe, but at the same time, people need to continue to cooperate, and parents need to get through to their children that I, again, you're going to wake up someday, and you're going to see us, an eight-foot fence around the skate park if we don't get compliance. On a positive note, outdoor dining is here, and as you can see on the far left is a new concept came up. Maria Bruni came up with this plan, met with business owners individually. Still a large part of the business activity with the restaurants is outdoor, I mean, curbside pickup, and we, you know, we do have a shortage of parking in our lots now because two of them were under construction, one reopened today. But the, so people were parking on the streets quite a bit and not leaving room for in-and-out business for not only the restaurants but for antique stores or the beauty supply store and other businesses in the downtown area. So these are spots that are designed to be 15 to 30 minutes only while picking up food. Police will be enforcing it, and we're just hoping people would cooperate and not park there for extended period of times, because all you're doing is hurting the other businesses in the downtown area. So the outdoor dining, as you know, we did not, we did not extend the public spaces to allow alcohol to be served. What we did do is that we designated four areas in downtown, the Run for Downtown Park next to Something Sweet, Jerry's Park, the King Street Walkway, and the North Street Park, as areas where the bid district in conjunction with local businesses downtown will be putting up tables, small, like cafe-type tables, and chairs. They'll be, the businesses have agreed that are adjacent to or in the vicinity of those parks have agreed to provide some staff to keep it clean. We also will have a bid district employee circling all four locations. They'll coordinate with, hopefully it'll be very busy, and there'll be a lot of garbage produced, but it'll be kept clean, and we're going to test it and see how long it goes. The governor did allow, in his executive order, that the city could assume the risk of allowing alcohol to be served on public property or even going out in the streets. Some communities have closed streets. But with that, assuming that risk becomes a lot of potential liability. So in discussions with my friend, Mr. Massey, Miguel, the council president, Alex Smith, our attorney, Maria Bruni, Economic Development Director, we weighed the positives and the negatives, and the negatives of doing such a thing far outweighed the positives, because it's not only assuming the normal risk, even if you have the individual business provides you with liability insurance indemnifying the city, that's not total indemnification. As we know, when something happens, the city gets sued no matter what, and in New York State, dramp shop liability, which is when you serve alcohol on your premises, even in your own home, there's huge liability to doing so. So we decided to go against the serving of alcohol on public property. We have our sidewalk permits, our cafe permits. The governor has allowed a business to expand their existing outdoor permits to other parts of their own property and without going through the state liquor authority, which usually takes six to eight weeks and even more. So you'll see some businesses like Carlos's Pizzeria out in Amcheur. He'll be using a couple of his parking spaces probably, at least from the diagram that I saw, John. I don't know if that's 100% correct, but there, but some businesses are putting up tents, but if you have a parking lot, you can put up a small tent in your parking lot. It can't be a permanent structure over it, but the rules are not made by us, the rules are made by the state, and the basis for this is to reassure people that you can get food to go downtown, and you can go picnic in the park, you can sit on King Street with it, there'll be sanitary facilities there. I'm sure restroom facilities will be provided by the restaurants, especially the ones where you bought the food at, and hopefully that'll give the ability of some of the downtown businesses to do a little bit more. You are not required to buy food from a downtown restaurant in order to sit at these tables. They are still public parks, so if you bring a sandwich from home and you want to sit there, that's fine also, just no alcoholic beverages. The James Street parking lot, the DLI, the final phase of the DLI, has begun. Festival Square and James Street are now torn up along with Orchard Street, and the construction is underway, and we expect this to probably be another, maybe six weeks or so, assuming the weather cooperates. But the project, when you see the diagrams and how it's going to look, I think you're all going to be very impressed with the end result. You've seen the diagrams, but the end result is going to be quite impressive. This is the Orchard Street lot. This is across from the old Thrall Library, and we're going to be, the Heritage Trail will be coming through on this piece also and through the back of the old former Woolworth Building. This was one of the projects not funded by the DLI but funded by you folks. It's nearly complete, meaning the sidewalk is in, as you can see, the wooded guard rail is there. The lighting, I believe, is going to be up by the end of the week. On the other side, the Oak and Reed side and the, you know, the Woolworth side, that is, all that is torn out. If you haven't been here, take a look. The back of the church, you can now see the beauty of that, and really is going to be an impressive project. This was funded by the City of Middletown, and that included the paving of the parking area and the lining of the parking area there. So there's also, currently, there's a small little part of the Tompkins Building, maybe an eight-by-eight or so structure, that it pinches between the church and Tompkins. The sidewalk pinches down to maybe five or six feet. That little building will be torn down, and so it'll be open and more visible, well-lit, and we were granted an easement from the Foley property for our drainage easement, so we put the drainage in, and so we're also, in exchange for the easement, will be paving that portion too. So it's going to be a very attractive part of our downtown and give those East Main Street businesses, people who want to take a two-minute walk, will have plenty of parking on Orchard. We're also working on the Paramount Audio Project. The infrastructure work is to begin soon. That's the rigging, and then the installation of the equipment. That's the new sound equipment. This is a, Maria, this is funded by us, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this is funded by the city through a prior capital budget line, and the total project cost to be in the area of $250,000. The coronavirus response, small business loan program relief program, the applications will be ready online on Monday. The funds allocated toward this program, this is the same grant program through Maloney's office of the purchase of the steam equipment, we're allocating $160,000. This is not a downtown program, this is a citywide program, so anyone who is eligible for these loans. It's for COVID-19-related hardships. In other words, if your business was closed or your business had lost a revenue, the determination will be through Economic Development Office. Up to $5,000 at 0% interest and per the eligible applicant, and these are for-profit businesses that are eligible. We're doing working capital loans, which we don't usually do, but they will be eligible for, under this program, and you must meet the eligibility requirements and HUD guidelines. So as I said, this is federal money, so we need to comply with the federal guidelines. As you know, we are here, Phase Two, and the types of businesses that are open are offices, real estate, essential and Phase Two in-store retail, vehicle sales, rental, repair and cleaning, commercial building management, hair salons and barber shops, outdoor and takeout delivery food services. The governor also allowed for outdoor dining in restaurants in this section, and over the weekend, he had a stern warning to both businesses and to individual communities that, number one, if you have a license with the state, like a liquor license, license to cut hair, any type of license, and you violate these protocols, you are in danger of losing your license along with getting a significant fine. He is not playing games on this. Some businesses have already lost one, their license. I think you saw the Monroe Bar Room that opened up, I think it was even prior to Phase One. My understanding is they were probably going to lose their license or face significant fines. So selling those few extra drinks really didn't seem so profitable now when you lose your business, because you can't sell beer, wine, or liquor. So that's his warning. Now, the warning to the communities is, if your numbers spike and our task force, which is going statewide, whether it's Liquor Authority Task Force or the New York State Task Force, I think it's called PAWS Task Force, and your community is not enforcing things, then we will shut your community down. We're not going to shut down the whole state again. We're going to, he implied that it might not even be by region. So Middletown, New York, if we're not enforcing skateboard regulations, park regulations, mask regulations, business regulations, when we get a complaint, if we are doing nothing and our numbers, as you can see, have already spiked and don't start leveling off, which they are, but if they go back up, then he can, within his authority, shut down all businesses in Middletown, New York. That would not be good for them, it would not be good for the city, and won't be good for the residents of the city either. So people need to listen. These are not idle threats. These are realities. You see what's happening in 21 states, Texas, Florida, Alabama, all of these states are spiking once they reopen, and the governor's keeping a firm grip on it. Whether you agree with it or disagree with it, that's the law. He's made it perfectly clear that local authorities, that means mayors, county executives, have no authority whatsoever to tell you that you don't have to do what the state law says you have to do. Enforcement is a local responsibility, but they also have the task force going around, they have representatives from the Liquor Authority going around, and if they determine, they make a recommendation that Middletown, New York, is not doing its job, then we could be shut down, Orange County could be shut down, and/or the region could be shut down once again. So I encourage everyone to please cooperate. When you're out and you're with people, wear a mask. If you're out and you're by yourself, you're not around people, you don't really need to wear a mask, but once you come upon people, you need to put a mask on, whether you're on the trail, whether you're on the street, and it's just two basic things right now, wear a mask and social distancing, and we'll be able to get through this. He addressed what some of the places, and especially in New York, and some communities are not paying attention at all, and we can relate, because we have some of those communities now that are not paying attention at all. So it's our job to either shut those things down, skate park, or to enforce. My choice is going to be to shut down the facility, because I don't want to be in a position where our police are struggling with, you know, teenagers over giving them a ticket for skateboarding, we'll just eliminate it for the rest of the season. Phase Three will be personal care, additional personal care businesses. You're already barber shops and beauty salons are open. Food services will be able to serve inside with 50% capacity. If you, and also the six-foot separation between tables, and they will continue at this point to at least July 3, and I assume it's going to be beyond, to allow the extended outdoor dining. The separation of the six-foot tables are important, and certain signage is going to be important. Just to note that we are going to, under the executive authority in the city, we are going to reduce the current five-foot separation between road and table to three feet, which is the guideline by, under the federal ADA guidelines. You can't do it for more than 200 feet, so basically walkways in front of a restaurant, if there's a wheelchair, you need to give access to the wheelchair to get through. But a lot of our sidewalks don't have the ability to have, to meet the outdoor dining guidelines that are in place, and we're going to ask the council to look at changing it permanently, because some people that want to have outdoor dining, they're seeing that it's working for them, are looking to do it on a regular basis. And as long as they keep that three-foot separation between curb and table and the ADA, which is the most restrictive thing you can possibly get to, is the American Disabilities Act protection, has the ability to reduce it to three feet with the qualifier that you can't do more than 200 feet in a row, and that you've got to give priority to someone who's walking through with a wheelchair. So we're, one of the good things that came out of this is businesses that we've been talking to for years trying to encourage them to put outdoor tables, because it looks nice, people feel more comfortable, parking their car, riding by, they see the business activity. They are now doing it this year out of necessity, but they're liking it. Excuse me. As you know, the $5.1 million budget shortfall is still our projection. The county exec came on today on his call and said that the sales tax collections are down 10% year-to-date. I don't think the quarter, though, of the March, April, May quarter is included in that, because you don't file until June 20, except unless you're a monthly filer, and that's based on volume. But the small businesses don't record until, don't report until June 20. So get a better idea of the impact of the first six months of the year when the reporting goes in at the end of June, so we'll probably get better numbers in July. But there, we're still projecting that shortfall, and we're going to be, of course, absorbing that, hoping that one of these vaccines that is now in Phase Three comes about and that the United States buys some from, was it AstraZeneca? That's the Phase Three one, the one that came out of Oxford University. So we're hopeful, but from a health perspective, but we're also hopeful from a budget shortfall perspective, that we need to have activity, and that's why, again, it's important for people to comply and not have this thing bounce back and spike on us like it has in other communities. And our last slide of the day is usually the census. We have leveled off on participation. Our numbers are not moving much, where we were moving, you know, a couple points a week, we're now moving tenths of a point per week. So we need you to participate in the census, get your family and friends to participate, get your constituents, call them up, close people that you know, ask them to fill it out. It takes no time on the computer, and you can do it by phone. They have Spanish, Chinese, English, multiple languages on phone and on the computer also. So to repeat, our sales tax revenue is our second highest revenue source in the city. Without it, we will be, if, without getting counted and we start losing a percentage of that total, then we will be in dire straits for future budgets. And Port Jervis, in the last census, had a loss of population, and it cost them hundreds of thousand dollars a year, and that's for 10 years. Port Jervis is actually doing a little bit better job than us on counting right now. They're about two or three points. They're about two or three points ahead of us. Now, this is households, they're counting, not people, so we only know about the household numbers, but we need to have people participate. If you're, if you don't care about the city revenues, you should care about your school district revenues, that's what it's based on also. Other federal aid, disaster aid, all of these things kick in. If you have a problem and you're looking to the government for help, if we don't have all of our people counted, we are not going to receive our fair share. And lastly, I said that was the last slide, but it's not. We're going to be, we're putting together a virtual town hall meeting, myself and the chief, in which we are hoping to outline to the public what the Middletown Police Department does. And as you see, the discussion nationally about defund police, I've said it on social media, I'll say it here to you, I think it's a foolish line politically, and I think it's a foolish line practically, that a lot of the, and I know defund means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, but just, and that's where the political part comes in, I think it's a stupid line. But what we have done in Middletown is, when you look at any of the criteria that other communities are, even what the state is telling us to do, such as no chokeholds, they've been banned a long time in Middletown. When you talk about demilitarizing the police, in 2010, we eliminated the SWAT team. When you look at how the police interact with the public, I think all of you have witnessed the pop-up barbecues that Chief Ewan Chu, and I think Chief Bethencourt might have started a little bit before that too, I'm not sure, but it's not just a barbecue, it's communication with our residents and the procedural justice platform that the police department has training on. We are also looking at body cameras. We've been waiting for the state of New York to impose them on the state police, which has not happened, they've been in pilot projects, and then they've got, they were stopped. I was interviewed by the Timesail Record today regarding that, and I said, no, I, we've been looking at them again, and this time, I think we're going to do it. There's going to be a cost, but I think the technology today, the chief will explain to the council at a future meeting, the systems that are, he's looking at, so we're not looking to get into too much detail, but I just want people to know that we're, part of the governor's plan is to have the public tell us, me as mayor, you as members of the council, what do you expect, what do they expect out of a police department? My comments to the paper included that neither the state nor federal government is going to tell us what our staffing levels need to be, that we determine that locally, but some of the major issues that we face as a city, especially a city that hosted a psychiatric facility that was defunded, and people were put out into the streets and put out into homes, is mental health calls. And the police are neither trained nor do they want to do mental health calls, but the police are going to respond to those calls. When a police, when a police station gets a call for a mental health call, they are going to respond. Would it be better if a social worker also showed up on the scene, and then when it's under control, that it be turned over to them? Absolutely, and we fully support that. That's not going to happen overnight, and there's many cases of, that we're going to go through at the forum that we're going to be presenting, from youth issues to mental health issues to drug addiction, NIKR, Narcan, all those things, you know, they say police shouldn't be involved in certain things, but when their child overdoses and the police show up with Narcan, they're very happy that the police are trained in that area. So, there's pluses and minuses, but we are not going to be forced into buying into, at least I'm not, going to be forced into buying into a national slogan, and every community's different. If, you know, if you have the chokehold in your community, God bless you, you make the noise and bring about change. We did it many, many years ago. RPD is a fully accredited department. We have, can we do more? Yes, and we're talking about that, but I think we've made significant strides, especially the past two years, where this procedural justice program, and we're not perfect, but I think the dialogue that we have with the community now is a good one. I hope it continues, I hope the protests, if they so choose, continue in a peaceful manner, and then that'll bring about real change into nationally and statewide, and locally, we do have some changing to put in place, and one of them is what I began with tonight, is talking to each other, learning more about different backgrounds and your culture and my culture and how we were raised. So, the talking is going to be a big part of it, and we're going to begin with, I'll range it with Pastor James Rollins, who has an interesting perspective because he also served as a commissioner in Middletown. And a lot of people don't understand that in Middletown, we do have a civilian police commission, so if you have a complaint, all of those complaints are reviewed, and those complaints go to the police department, and it goes up the ladder through an internal affairs process, ultimately reaching the chief, and on serious things, the commission does get involved. So, you do have a civilian review board in Middletown. So, all the things, or not all of them, but a lot of the things they're shouting about nationally, we already do. The cameras, we don't, but we will be doing, and there's a couple other changes we're going to recommend. So, I encourage the public, when we do set a date, to participate. We're going to have some panelists from the community, we're going to have some of our local ministers on, hopefully a member or two of the common council, and we'll address the community's needs, answer their questions, listen to what they have to say, and we'll move forward based on that and make our determinations. But I just want to assure the residents of Middletown that defund police, from my perspective, is not one of the options. So, the, doing business differently in some areas, if the state and the county and the federal government pick up the responsibility for mental health calls, possibility, possibility, I think absolutely. And you all are familiar with when we had domestic violence shootings in our community, Chief Ewan Chu reacted very quickly and brought Safe Homes, not only their program and brought them to the council, but we gave them an office in City Hall, I mean, in the police station. So, Safe Homes is actually embedded in the Middletown Police Station, they do a lot of the follow-up, and they do a lot of the community work that police officers are not trained to do, but the Safe Homes is coming in and taking that responsibility, and that's their expertise. So, we have a model to follow, and we'll continue to do that as long as other agencies can fund those programs. Any questions?
Alderman Massey.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if I missed this, but did you address the reopening of City Hall?
I did not, because I haven't seen the guidelines yet. My thoughts are that I'm looking right after the Fourth of July, I think it's July, Monday, July 6th, to reopen City Hall to the public. We're debating now, we have a reopening committee, myself, Chuck Mitchell, Alex Smith, and Maria Bruni, and we're looking at different options of whether we should be taking temperatures as people come in, employees, the public, one-way-in, one-way-out type of situation. Our issue is complicated with the court, and I haven't discussed it with Jacob, but we can't have the courtroom lobby area backed up with people in that narrow area because others should not have to walk by them. So, you know, you don't, it's only like three feet wide, so, the ramp. So, we're going to have to make some changes, and we're trying to finalize the plan, and we'll have one very shortly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. On a different subject, someone asked me where we are on the bus station, and I don't think we're anywhere on it, but...
Well, you're about right. We have a conference call tomorrow with Senator Metzger, she's coordinated a conference call with Coach USA. I believe they are trying to get the county possibly involved in the call also. Just as a reminder to all of you, that this project is 90% funded by the federal government, transportation money's passed through through the county, I don't think the county has any direct dollars into it, but we have discussed in the past where the city would have to, if need be, take over the project. If we do, it would delay the project. Coach was sold, and, you know, 10 years of work went right down the drain, they put everything on hold. So, we don't know what we're going to hear from Coach tomorrow, but I'm not confident that we're going to hear good news from them, that they're going to move this along quickly. What I'm urging Senator Metzger, Simon Mun Gunther, and we'll be having a conversation, and we've had conversations with the staff of Congressman Maloney, is to do something that, to put pressure. You know, transportation companies are, receive a lot of government money, a lot of subsidies, and without those subsidies, they don't survive that well. And, you know, they're not going to maintain and just drop us because they were bought by some financial group out of, you know, somewhere USA. That local coach is no longer a local coach, and we're going to see what pressure we can put on, beginning tomorrow with the conference call with Senator Metzger. Jacob is deeply involved in that, he can probably give you a little bit more of an update, and the, but we're at a point where we're thoroughly disgusted with Coach's response, and we need the big guns to come in, and that's Maloney, Gunther, and Metzger.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
No, I got one more, I've got to thank you. We have, the, you know, we had a pretty significant change order of $11,000 at the Woolworth Building, and Harry Rotolo and Sons, you know, the budget on that property was exhausted, and they could have just walked away from it and said, hey, we're not going to do the change order, and they did it, and they donated that service to the city of Middletown, had a value of $11,000. So, I want to thank Harry Rotolo and Sons for their, for their contribution to the city, and, you know, we do a lot of business for them, it's always good relationship, they do a fantastic job for us, and in this case, they donated $11,000 of services for us to complete that project. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, reports of department heads, economic development.
Tonight on the agenda, you have approval to submit our five-year con, I can't speak tonight, consolidated plan and our 2020 action plan. Like to thank Patty and my office for putting that all together and getting it ready for submission. Also, the farmers' market started two weeks ago, and I just want to commend everybody for putting that together and the whole guidelines that we had to follow, the social distancing and with the farmers and the customers coming through. I know everybody followed the rules, and it worked out real well, we got a lot of positive feedback from the customers about how well organized and, you know, everybody had their mask on, the farmers as well, doing a fabulous job on how they're dealing with the public, so that's going smoothly. Also, the tables that the mayor mentioned about the public spaces for eating, I want to say we purchased 30 of those, and they were, the funds were donated by the Run For Downtown organization to purchase that, so they donated that to the Business Improvement District and the city. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
I'm going to be very brief tonight, really brief, because the mayor has updated you on most of the capital projects, I'm just going to zip through others very quickly. The ADA curbs and sidewalks, that three and a half, four million dollar project, DOT is reviewing the plan, the contracts, hopefully we'll have a construction meeting soon, and we'll get it started. Traffic operation is moving along to the design, and they're approaching the final design and the preparation and the plans on the specifications. And reminder again to the public, please have the grass or your lawn cut in a timely manner. Right now, the city, City DPW is utilizing all of its employees from the water department, sewer department as much as possible, with the street department in order to do, and sanitation department in order to do the spring cleanup. So, we are spread very thin, so please help us out by maintaining your own property. We've got so many, I mean, huge numbers of parcels that we have to maintain our own city parcels by cutting the grass, please cut your own grass. We're hiring more part-timers in there to replace others that they had to go, but long story short is, you will be assessed, you'll be, you have already received letters, we've sent 700 letters for high grass, and we're going to be cutting the grass, manpower permitted, and you will be billed for it, so please help us out. Also, many times we get, thankfully, we get many referrals from the council president, from Alderman Massey, from the mayor, Johnson, Alderman Johnson, everybody in here, they send us referrals, Alderman Jude, about high grass, and other woman, Ram Kasun, Alderman Kleiner, I might as well mention all of you guys. They do, they do, because it takes a village. My point is, it takes a village to run the city, so please, if you see something, say something, call us at DPW, say this guy's backyard, the grass is four feet high, or what have you, because it's just our code enforcement, they cannot see all that stuff, and they can't be everywhere. So, we need everybody's help, and I appreciate it. We do get a lot of referrals from everyone. Before you tonight, so, we discussed the spring cleanup, fourth ward started Monday, and then the third ward next week, the following week, the second ward, and the following week, first week, I think of July, is the first ward, spring cleanup. So, again, if you see somebody bringing garbage or junk from the outside of the city, please report it to the police department or after hours, or to DPW during the hours. If you can take a picture of the person doing it with the license plate, you don't have to even show yourself, we can, we can take that information and do something with it, but we need to control illegal dumping from outside the city because that's very costly for the city taxpayers. Before you tonight, you have two resolutions, one for hiring, continuing the support and hiring CDM Smith for installing flow meters at different, between different reservoirs in order to monitor the flow, that is required by DEC, and also DEC has required from us to, to do an additional, different safe yield model for our safe yield. Before, we had a static model, now we have to have dynamic model in there that will monitor the stream levels as we are withdrawing water. I don't know when this is going to stop with the DEC, I mean, I love them to death, but they're really, it's one study after one study after one study, I don't know where we're going with this, but we're going to keep meeting their demands and see where that's going to get us. We're confident that we have the water to supply our needs and what we are committed towards. So, with that, we'll be meeting with them tomorrow to delineate some wetlands in there, in the Indigo Area and in the Shawangang Area in there, to see if anything that we will be doing in installing the flow meters, if it's going to have any impact on the wetlands, and we'll have to deal with that. We don't believe it will, but we'll have to check it out tomorrow with the DEC. And I will conclude, if you have any questions.
Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Jacob, the week of July 4th, our recycling set out, I think there was an email about it, we set out recyclables on the usual Thursday, even though Friday's a holiday, or is that...
Yes, because the reason behind it, usually when we have a holiday, I think that particular Friday, we're off, so we usually, we don't pick up when we're off. We publicize, we send out our calendar that we're not going to be picking up recyclables that Friday because City Hall is closed. However, we cannot do it Saturday because the, because that's the Fourth of July, the actual Fourth of July, and the landfill or Orange County Transport, Orange County Transfer Station will be closed that day, so we can't keep the recyclables in our truck, so we're going to have to pick it up on Friday when City Hall is closed. So, we'll be sending out, we'll be sending out an Excel, and that's another reminder for the public to use Excel, please, it's very, it's a very efficient way of communicating immediately with people, like the mayor, he keeps repeating that, it's worth repeating one more time. Sign up to Excel, it's very easy, and so that's what we're going to be doing. We're not going to be picking it up on July 4th, we're going to be picking it up Friday, which is July 3rd, that's recyclables.
Okay.
So, everything on that week will be per schedule, yes, sir.
Yeah. Alderman Johnson.
I have a message for you, Commissioner, it was from a resident of Hampshire, they want to thank you and your department for installing a stop sign on Hampshire.
Very good, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Just want to point out again that we can't pick up electronics during... Thank you. Just want to point out again that we can't pick up electronics during the pickup.
Yes, exactly. Thank you very much.
Yes, and there will be a drop-off.
Yes, there will be, and yes, there will be a date. It's already been assigned for a drop-off of electronics. So, please do not put out computers, TVs, you know, hard drive, microwaves. There's going to be another day. You can go to, come and drop them off for free within certain limitation, as set by the council and the mayor, the number of units, but that will be all advertised. Thank you.
Alderman Massey?
Jacob, we're going through a dry season. It's certainly going to begin in the last week or so. We haven't had any moisture. How are we doing with our reservoirs?
That's an excellent question. So far, we're in great shape right now. We're, I believe we're pretty, we are full at this time. I get reports, and we keep monitoring it, because we adjust valves and running, you know, different, but we're in good, very good shape at this time. Yes. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes. I just want to say, just driving around the fourth ward, I see a lot of tires. Is there anything we could do with that? I know we don't pick up tires when we do that.
We do, we do. There's a limitation, number of tires. That's in our ad.
Okay.
We pick up a number of tires, but they have to be, I think, how many? Four?
Four.
Four off the rim.
Yeah, I think four tires. Yeah, we pick up, we pick up.
Okay, I see a lot of them that was left over.
No, we probably will come back different, because they can't be mixed. The tires, they go one place. The rest of the stuff goes to our transfer station.
Metals different, tires are different, and then garbage.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, many times we live, like the council president said, it's different, different crews, different trucks, different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, sir.
Please Chief, thank you. We'll be brief.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for just giving a quick oversight of what the police department's been doing. I know last meeting, I touched upon it. I actually look forward to the upcoming meeting, so that we can highlight all the things that we have been doing over the several years, and to get the feedback from the community, to see where the community wants us to go from here. Looking at Phase Two, the police department has definitely seen an increase in productivity. Traffic has increased, both vehicle and foot traffic. Our call volume has greatly increased in the last couple days, or last week. So, we're definitely out there again, working, definitely see the officers in and around the communities. With the nice weather in the Phase Two, actually has nothing to do with Phase Two, but with just the nice weather in the time of the year, our fireworks calls have increased over the last several days. So, I just want to remind the community, fireworks are not authorized in the city of Middletown. I know there's some confusion, because you can buy them legally in some of the local stores. You cannot buy them within the city limits, nor can you utilize them in the city limits. So, just please be aware of that. We will have extra enforcement out to address that. On the same topic, I've been in communication with Alex Smith, Corporation Counsel, in regards to drafting a local city ordinance in regards to the use of fireworks. So, he's exploring some options, and hopefully will have something in the near future to help us with the enforcement actions there. There is a resolution before you this evening to accept a donation in regards to the National Night Out Against Crime for 2020. There is some chatter about what to do with the National Night Out this year, being that we don't know where we'll be as far as our ability to have gatherings. Right now, the National Night Out organization is recommending that that event be pushed off to October 6th. So, right now, we are still kind of in limbo, but we didn't want to turn away donations. Many of the donors know that we have this alternative date of October 6th. If something changes, we will be in communication with, with those donors to make sure that they're aware of what's going on with their, their funds. Over the last several weeks, and I mentioned this last, last meeting, but I feel it needs to be mentioned again, is we, in the police department, have received numerous letters thanking us for our service, letters of support and whatnot. It's, it's super greatly appreciated. I get to read them all. We post them, so the officers get to see that their hard work doesn't go unnoticed. This week, though, I did open a package that was more heartfelt and heartwarming than, than we've seen, not that the other ones don't mean as much. But, this was a package from elementary school students, all individualized to the officers, not to the individual officers, but to what the officers do. And this kind of caught my attention, because this took more than just that student to write this letter. This was our educators. This was our parents. So, it goes to show that as a community, we are working to support our, our first responders that are out doing the jobs that they do on a daily basis. So, I'd like to just thank them for that. And lastly, June 19th, as the mayor mentioned, is a special day with the Emancipation Proclamation, and it is actually the date of our next demonstration that is scheduled here in Middletown. There's a demonstration scheduled for June 19th, Friday, next Friday, or this Friday, I'm sorry, 4 o'clock at Davich Park. I've been in communication with the organizer. He is one of the organizers that's done one of the previous events, which was successful, and I'm hoping that he will be just as successful with this, this coming event. We will have staff there to help support them and ensure that they are safe, to participate with them as well. With that, I have nothing else.
Any question for the police chief? Alden Burr?
Chief, are you planning on doing the neighborhood walks in, bringing out the staff in the summer, as we used to walk in neighborhoods, around the neighborhoods?
Wait, just for clarification, when we did it as a group, or just walkers themselves?
No, no, you said walking beats. Are you planning on doing any of that this year after all this COVID's done?
So, I do encourage that the officers get out and walk while they have some time in between calls, and that is dependent on the call volume. But, the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, I did bring back a couple of weeks ago. So, as they are out in the communities, we try to get them to walk a little bit more than, than the officers that are going call to call. So, we will see some officers, depending on the call volume and what's going on community-wide, we'll determine how much. But, it is definitely something that is encouraged on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
I saw in the news, the state was going to require reforms tied to funding. Is there anybody specifics about that, or?
I, I am personally not aware of the specifics.
Oh, okay.
I'm waiting for some of the guidance that is attached to some of these new laws.
I get frustrated, too, because sometimes with these mandates, you know, we're not all in the same places. I think we're really far ahead of the curve, and then these one-size-fits-all things kind of frustrate me. But, I was just curious where we were, or what the requirements were.
Yeah, as, as I mentioned, and the mayor mentioned, we are waiting for some of the guidelines and guidance to kind of help us get through some of these changes.
Okay, thank you.
And understand them better.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Just, early voting is still going on this week. It's over, early voting is over on Sunday, and it's at the senior center. If anybody needs the times, they're on our website. Also, June 23rd, this Tuesday, is the primary day. That's the regular voting day for the primary. They are the special locations for that, which everyone who's eligible to vote in the primary should have got something in the mail on that. If there's any questions, it's all they have to do is call City Hall on the clerk's office at 346-4166, and we can help them on where they have to vote. And I know they, everyone did get by mail an absentee ballot vote, so I'm sure a lot of people use that process to vote. But, if anybody did want to go to vote on primary day, that would be the day, other than early voting this week. And that's all I have. Anybody has any questions?
Any question for John? Okay, thanks, John. Reports of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Tobin?
I'd just like to thank the chief and the, and the mayor for their efforts on the policing. You know, we're all in different spots, and I think we're really far ahead of the curve. I think that defund the police, that's a Black Lives Matter slogan. I think we need to talk to them to see what they mean by it. I don't think it means like, just stop, you know, get rid of your police budget. I think it means something different. So, I think having that dialogue will help, you know, see what people mean by that. And I think, you know, we've been, you know, whenever I talk to people from outside the area, in the region, we're getting compliments on their police force and what they've been doing. So, I think we're really, a lot of the things that we are doing, we're really far ahead. So, I think we're doing a good job there. And then, as far as moving into the Phase Two, you know, I think I borrow a line from JFK, you know, it's not, it's not what your country can do for you, it's what you can do for your country. I think wearing the face masks in public is not about you, it's about everybody else. So, don't wear your face mask for yourself. It's for, you know, our first responders. It's for the hospital workers that had to see all the pain and suffering in the hospitals, for people like my parents that are basically locked down, because they're afraid to go out much because of the COVID. For our businesses that are trying to reopen, we don't want to backslide into that, into that Phase One again, or be locked down. So, I agree with the mayor, everybody, let's do our part and wear a mask, not for yourself, but for everybody else. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yeah, chief, I just want to, thank you for going over the fireworks there. You know, I know we've, we've heard from, from our constituents a few times, and, you know, it's, everyone wants to celebrate. There's a lot going on. We've been locked up, but there are legal ways to do it, and dry grass and fireworks also don't go well together. So, with that, I do want to congratulate the class of 2020, as they've been graduating, and we've seen celebrations all around. You know, certainly are extraordinary times for people to, to graduate from high school, but, you know, it's, it's, it's an important thing. So, congratulations to everyone, and mayor, thank you for keeping us all updated on, on everything. I know I don't say it every meeting, but, you know, we all do appreciate your updates, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you very much. Public Works Meeting this evening, we made some progress on longstanding initiatives, and I compliment the chair on moving us forward. Skate park tough love works for me, mayor. Tough love can be the best love. As far as Black Lives Matters and those issues, I think, obviously Minneapolis and now Atlanta have set forth a lot of energy in this country, hopefully move us in a good direction. We've all heard many mayors throughout this country being interviewed in the last five to 10 days. And two concepts I've heard frequently throughout those interviews, community policing and de-escalation training. So, these are phrases we heard in this very room two weeks ago from our chief. And being ahead of the curve is sometimes a hazardous place to be, but in this case, I'm proud as we all are that we are in that place, and we thank law enforcement for getting us where we are today and keep up the good work. With respect to the rallies we had, I have a good friend of mine who works with state police, and he was assigned to one of those rallies on that Sunday. And we happened to get together on another matter, and he just remarked on that rally. And he said, and I quote, "Well, you must be doing something right in Middletown, because the rallies went very well, and they were very peaceful." So, people do notice, and thank law enforcement for all they're doing to keep us that way. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoon?
Good evening. I just wanted to say congratulations to the class of 2020. Our seniors are all virtually graduating next week, and I know that everyone's still looking for that final ceremony. But, no matter what happens, I just want you seniors to know that our community, we're all very proud of you, and this is just a drop a bucket in the bucket of your life, and you will, you're about to embark on a whole new adventure. So, take it all in stride, know that this just makes you a little tougher, and good luck to you all. That's all I have tonight.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I also want to thank the police department. The last march and protest and rally, and, you know, it doesn't matter where it begins, it's, goes all over town, and it did a remarkable job of keeping up with it and keeping everyone safe. That's, that's the priority, and they're really so good at it. You know, in Middletown, we've always had, we've had Middletown Cares for many years, and Mayor's Youth Council, we've had Neighborhood Watch, Cops and Kids, we have Police Academy, we've had pop-up barbecues. Police have been our partners in the community with everything we do, and I think it really has put us ahead of the curve. So, let's, let's hope, certainly, you know, the homeless outreach, we actually had a warming station committee meeting today, because it's not too early to start. I mean, summer begins on Saturday, and the days start getting shorter, and you don't want to be in October trying to figure out how you're going to do this, because you can't pack people together the way we have, even though it's been good. But, it doesn't look like we'll be able to do that. So, there are a lot of things to talk over. I thank the mayor for the proclamation on Juneteenth. You know, I went to Texas at the grad school in 1968, so I've been celebrating Juneteenth for 40 years. We had some, just really my, my best friends in Texas. I bought the cheesecakes, and they made the black-eyed peas, and, but there was always a Juneteenth celebration. And there was much awareness of that it took two and a half years before people in Texas knew they were freed. So, they had another two and a half years of being slaves while that word was kept from them. So, it's, I'm, I just love seeing it go nationwide. It's, it's a wonderful spirit. I want to thank Sparrow, you know, Alderman Tobin, and the Lions Club. I did go to the, they had a demonstration at the Town of Walk Hill ambulance, and the Lions Club donated, I think, to eight different volunteer ambulance companies, electrostatic disinfecting equipment and spray equipment, and really, it's amazing how it works. So, that, that didn't make the paper. Somebody was furloughed that week, and, you know, so, sometimes the good news doesn't get out, but I thank the Lions Club, you know, and I saw the donation to the, to St. Paul's in the food pantry, so, the big refrigerator, so that's really good. Finally, I just want to say, because we don't meet again until July 7th, so, happy Fourth of July, happy Independence Day. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes, thank you. The DPW committee met this evening. We did have interesting conversation. I'm looking forward to continue our conversation through the next meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
It was great to see Phase Two open. I finally could get a haircut after three months, right, Joe? Thank you. Like Joe says, wear your mask. I'm a businessman, and I constantly have to tell the people, put the sign on the door, you know, just for your protection and mine, as Sparrow Tobin said. And stay on course, and we can be at Phase Three and be very successful for all our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to accept a total of $1,250 in donations from local businesses supporting the National Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Row.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign the 2019 LowSAP sponsor authorization form.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Row.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to implement the New York State legislation regarding the awarding of LowSAP credit points during the coronavirus emergency.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Row.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to implement the New York State legislation regarding the awarding of LowSAP credit points during the coronavirus emergency.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Row.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal from CDM Smith for engineering and design services to assist the city with satisfying permit conditions with the DEC.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Todd. Any discussion? Row.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the approval for an amended agreement with Jacobs Engineering to begin work on time series analysis on Kinch Pond, Mil Pond, and Inagut Creek, not to exceed $39,000, with a transfer from the water fund balance.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Row.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the transfer from the general fund to the contractual services of $22,500 to cover the unbudgeted cost of services provided by the New York Security Systems for the Middletown Fire Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Todd, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
contractual services of $22,500 to cover the unbudgeted cost of services provided by the New York Security Systems for the Middletown Fire Department.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, second by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman and Massey to authorize the purchase of a lien from Cheswold for 21 Lincoln Street in the amount of $14,163.46 to be used by the CDA for the home ownership program.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, second by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green to award the bids for the annual plumbing maintenance and work for the city buildings and facilities.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, second by Aldman Tobin. Discussion? Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That's all for new business.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be ordered and the claims be adjusted. The city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for the payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, second by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That's all for new business.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be ordered and the claims be adjusted. The city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for the payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, second by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Ram Kassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
New for German, so moving.